You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
I'll order the October 10th meeting of the Swansea Planning Board here at Whitcomb Hall. Begin with the roll call. Scott Self, that's me, I'm here. Richard Lane.
Here.
Mark Scolera.
Here.
Brandon Self will not be here. Michael York.
Here.
Victoria Ames.
Here.
Selectmen's rep Charles Harbeck is not here. Steve Malone, alternate.
Here.
Is here. Michael Scungeal, alternate. Jane Johnson, alternate. And I will seat Steve for Brandon. And the agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes of September 26, 2024. And under public hearings, we have Planning Board 24-022. That's a boundary line adjustment submitted by Edward Goodrich on behalf of Thomas Schneider for a property look at at a 685 Old Homestead Highway. Property is located at tax map 234, Lot 57, and is in a residential district. Under discussions and other business, we have definition discussion of office, definition discussion of retail establishment, and select plan review training. Bring us back to the top. And we need a regional impact motion. And nothing here.
I don't see a motion.
Okay, motion by Michael that we do not have anything on our agenda that would be a regional impact. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Richard. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, let's move on to the minutes. The minutes of September 26, 2024. We have a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Victoria. Is there a second?
Second.
Let's see, I think Mark being a second by Mark. So any further discussion? Okay, I just have one thing, and that would be on page two. And it would be the second, let's see, it looks like one, two, three. It's a second motion paragraph. Starts with motion. Says motion to approve one-year extension for turmoils approved site plan, which was approved on October 12th. Seconded by Brandon Self. It doesn't say who made the motion.
I did that.
Okay, you did it. Okay, so would you just note, Stefan, that Michael made that motion?
Which motion?
Yeah, that motion on page two. Any further discussion on the minutes? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, step that on the way. Now let's move on to the boundary line adjustment. We have the map in front of us and the application in our packet. And if the application looks good, then we can have a motion that the application is complete and ready to go to a public hearing. Now, let me have a look here. We have it in here. The name and address of the applicant, mailing address, let's see. And its street address is there. Map and lot numbers are there. You know, even just when it's a residential area, name and mailing addresses, phone number, if they are there. And it's signed, and we have the plat in front of us. So it looks to me like the application is complete. So, okay, motion by Mark that the application is complete and ready to go to a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Richard. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, move on to the public hearing. I'll open up the public hearing. And again, we have the map in front of us showing what's going on here.
Mark made the motion.
Mark made the motion on the last, yeah, sorry, Mark made the motion. And Richard seconded that the application was complete. Okay. So. And pretty much what they're doing is, you can see, they're extending the lot size a little bit, adding somewhat to that lot, and they're adding that like diagonal line in there. Everybody see what's going on?
Yeah, it's colored going up.
Oh, okay, you got it there? All right. And now, and would you identify yourself for the record and just give us a brief, identify yourself for the record, just a brief synopsis of what you're doing?
I'm Ed Goodrich, the landscape area working at the project Tom Schneider, the fusty of the problem.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I'm taking, I'm hearing impaired, both my hearing aids died. Next, two weeks I'm getting my new ones.
That's it, just tell us to speak up.
Please bear with me. I'm a little handicapped tonight. What you see before you is something we're trying to make a legitimate building out of the shed in the back. For years, the Schneider family owned two tracts of land. The small house lot of .68 acres and the larger land in the rear. When they, a barn was built, it straddled the lines. And now the family would like to make sure that the house and the barn were all on the same lot, and the back land can be free and clear pasture land and mowing land. So what we're doing is taking that small area, using the existing frontage pen and an existing pin on the boundary. We've set a new pin connecting the lines to incorporate all of the barn on the lot with the house, in large in the house. No other changes, no additional lots. We're coming into the proposal with two lots, we're going out, hopefully with two lots. And I would be happy to try to answer questions if you have any. It's a pretty simple proposal, I think.
Yep, pretty straightforward. Are there any questions from the board?
Just, I'll be hard to hear, I know. This shed, will this make proper setbacks?
Yeah, yes. We put the line beyond.
What is it, 20 feet?
It's 20 feet in the back, yeah.
Which is why we made plenty of room to get around the backside of the barn, which otherwise it would certainly have been nicer to make it parallel with.
And it brings that lot almost up to an acre.
Yeah.
So it's pretty darn close there. Almost up to an acre. Pretty close. Anybody, any other board member? Richard, do you have anything on that?
No.
Okay, anybody from the public here on this one? No, so if no more questions from the board or the public, I will close the public hearing. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Thank you. So again, it's pretty straightforward. See what they're doing here. And just need a motion, I guess, unless there's any other discussion.
I'll move your proposal.
Motion by Michael York to approve the lot line adjustment.
Second.
Seconded by Mark. Is there any further discussion?
I love how much information is, this is a great, it's a good one, yeah.
Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm complimenting you on your, on your plan here. There's so much good information.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's really nice.
You're good to go.
And it's approved. Bring us to.
Who wanted to do them first prior to that? It's like your goal.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've got the, I forgot, that wasn't, it's not on there, right? Okay. So. You folks are up. We're taking you next. So this is a rezoning on Base Hill Road, correct?
Yes.
Just come on up and tell us what you have in mind. We have this.
You have this set?
Yep.
Right, so we have written proposals. And I basically, I've made what is zone now for every lot on Base Hill Road. And then what everybody would prefer to be for more future on. So I don't know if you want to have that standing out?
If you have at least one of them, we'd like for the record.
So you talked to each of the property owners to set?
Yeah. At least half a dozen of them have it on this form, which I'm going to submit as well.
Okay, so is that your form to submit for a warrant article? Is that what that is?
Both of them together.
Okay.
Correct. That's the ready form, and this is the okay that everybody's seen this proposal, that I've spoken to on the road, that are okay with it happening. Res zoning it from commercial industrial or business to resident from residential.
Okay, so you're not.
Everything that's there now is brand on again. Like our paving, Hill's construction, obviously the gas station up on the corner, and the Signworks guy, which is bringing that too. And obviously, all the restored, just small units are there. And then we're thinking, I said, if they let you.
So you're not coming in under a petition right now. You're just presenting to the board?
Yeah.
Yeah, because you can, you know, if the board disagrees with you, then you can petition. You have 25 signatures, I think, to get it on the warrant, any word.
Right. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that I'm not just the only one that's asking for this. And I've spoken to everybody on the road, and they were kind of lying talk about how it is zone currently. Most of those properties that are in a commercial industrial zone are residential for old. And they just didn't understand the complexity or why that happened. Some, I can't even remember when it was done. And then I've had a person, the Goslins, which are in the business zone, they don't even remember when it was done, and they've been in for 20 years. So we just, we'd be a lot more happier if it was resold more residential and commercial and business.
So let's see, you're submitting this to rezone all the ways from Route 10 all the way up to the Keene line? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, all the properties there.
Yeah.
Could be rezoned to residential or rural ag.
Correct.
Residential or rural ag?
Residential or rural ag.
Oh, either one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sharon, didn't you ask them to examine the, like, the first two properties from Route 10? So you brought the two DOT properties and then the? Correct. Goslin and Global. Yeah. Both of those two properties in on corners would remain as they are.
DOT doesn't care in a way, because they're going to put their office where they want to.
Exactly, yeah.
Stay at the lot.
So you're saying residence or rural ag, are you saying you're leaving it up to the planning board, or you don't?
But it is documented on the written form that I presented to you. So there are two that we.
Let me read that to the board, because nobody's saw it really, so.
This is one of the rough draft ones that I have, that I don't.
Okay, but this is the one you're submitting right here, that you gave us there.
Yeah.
This is rezoning proposal for Base Hill Road, Swansea, New Hampshire. Says whereas Base Hill Road is largely residential lots with single-family homes, and whereas the Keene end of Base Hill Road is zoned as rural, low-density, single-family residence or conservation, and whereas Base Hill Road is a Class V road not wide enough to handle a commercial/business volume of traffic and is already overburdened by trucks and businesses, or businesses, vehicles using it for a shortcut, making it unsafe for residents to walk and bike. And whereas lots on Base Hill Road are backed in Swansea by Yale Forest on one side and a large significant wetland on the other, which serves as an important floodplain and wildlife habitat and creates a critical wildlife crossing situation. And whereas the entire east side and half the west side of Base Hill Road lies atop an aquifer. Therefore, the zoning map of the town of Swansea dated 9/147 as amended is to be further amended as follows. Lots fronting on Base Hill Road, now included in the business district or commercial industrial district, shall instead be included in the residence district. Lots with existing businesses to be grandfathered for current use owner. So that's the proposal. And then we have, I think, a list of all the lot numbers and who lives there and the address.
In zones that currently aren't.
Zone what they're in now, okay.
Probably.
Yeah, for sure. Summary, split up between business and the, you got rural ag, some rural ag on there? I guess not, just business.
Yeah. Rural ag, Yale Forest would be happy enough to.
No, I first.
There is, yeah, Yale Forest, it's a rural ag.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, Lot 8 and Lot 7.
It's a, yeah. This is the Keene section. This is all, this is, this is, this is a, this is a rural. Oh, excuse me, no. This is Keene.
Yeah, it also gave the amount of Keene's end, which is a lot. So you have.
It's Keene. So is this where they're trying to get?
There are lives for the growth. And it's also low-density living, single-family homes.
Yep.
There are a lot of them there.
Let's see, and we are business all the way to the Keene line.
Question, Scott.
Go ahead.
The businesses that are now grandfathered in, does that mean they can no longer expand in business if they so desire within their own property?
And it'd be much more difficult. They'd have to go to the ZBA to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a concern.
It's also a concern, yeah, rezoning those businesses, which now, they purchase those properties as business, commercial property, to use as that. And then you throw them a curveball and zone it residence, which makes them all non-conforming.
Well, the existing businesses that are there.
Yeah.
They stay as business.
They would, yeah.
And they can work within their own lot. I don't see why.
Mm-hmm.
That would be complicated. Exactly. Or expand whatever they want to within their lot.
They would anyway.
Right.
Within their lot.
Right, so I don't see that being an issue.
The only.
I've talked to Andy, you know, he's okay with whatever.
Yeah.
And then I spoke with Matt a while back, and he's indifferent about it at all, so.
Matt, who's that?
Arlington Bathing.
Okay.
One issue that I see maybe coming up is the vacant lot that All Purpose Storage owns.
Correct.
And so they are proposing that be rezoned.
And that may turn into a legal issue if the town goes rezoning it while they're in the middle of a court case there, which is.
Yeah, I don't think it can be rezoned while, I don't think it can either. Yeah.
It probably, you're right.
Yeah, it probably can't be, so. Yeah.
Yeah. It's hard to go, I guess.
Yeah.
Better stand up.
Comments from the board?
That was my biggest concern, is how are we going to be stealing the business owners' edge of the right to expand in business if, like, we bank it lot for all purpose storage? I don't think it's fair to tell them he bought that with the purpose of doing something, knowing what the zoning was at the time, so it's like stealing his property.
It's a taking.
Right.
All zoning is a taking, but yeah, that's, in my opinion, I think you're correct, yeah, I agree with that. It's a taking. It's a taking in the rest of them that are there too, because there are more than the uses that are there on those properties. There are more allowable uses in that commercial zone and in the business zone. So if you rezone it to residential or even rural ag, you've just taken all those uses away from those properties there on Route 10.
Do you, does the board know when this was voted, when this was approved at town meeting?
The foundation paving is been there since I was a child.
Or I mean, like, the zone, I'm sorry.
The zone approved, the zone, no, I don't recall, how do I call it?
Mine predated myself too, before we had zoning in Swansea.
Oh, okay.
Okay, before Ellington paving, that was a brass man's mansion.
Okay.
Brass garage.
Yeah. And then Cox had a repair facility there at one time, power plant facilities, by his house. So I don't know when, we'd have to do research on when zoning actually started in Swansea.
Still ongoing.
Yeah, it's always going to be. But yeah, that commercial industrial was changed probably, you know, maybe 20 years ago, 15 years ago, something like that.
I think we have.
Could be.
I'd like to think about this in terms of the context. So there's, you know, there's sort of the theoretical question of changing the zoning on properties that people have either agreed to or not agreed to that change. But what's the status of Base Hill Road?
It's.
State Road, Town Road?
Town maintained.
Town.
I think it's different for Keene.
Oh, it might be different from.
Okay, so my Keene too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you think it's different class? It's not a Class V in Keene, you know?
No, I mean, ownership wise.
Oh, 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 yeah.
On the Keene side.
It's a Class V.
The town definitely maintains that Swansea's not it.
It's a Class V.
Okay, so Class V, we have 100% responsibility for maintaining it.
That's correct.
Okay. Because, I mean, one of the key issues on this section of road, I think, always has been that it's, especially up in Keene, you know, it's not a big road, right?
Yeah, very narrow, there's no down lanes, there's no.
Yeah, exactly. So it's, the road itself feels as if it's much more appropriate for the lower level of use that would be, you know, uses that would generate traffic that would be in a residence district, so there's that.
Yeah.
Okay. To bring it down to the level in particular in this instance.
Well, I think I'd be in favor of changing it residential down all the ways to where it is residential now. You know, excluding that field, obviously, because that field is, you know, the.
Still a limit.
Yeah, it is, but down to that field, it's all residents now. And I guess it's own business now, which that could be done this year at town meeting, down to that property line.
Yeah. Would you be willing to accept the business farthest from your application?
You can't, what do you mean?
To that, really?
Take a generous point in where the business starts.
That's kind of what we're talking about, yeah, because it's own business. You have one of these up there too, right? It's own business all the way up to the Keene line, yet as we know, it's residents all the ways down to where actually that storage business starts in that area there.
Hosing that that would be. Submit, turning this into residence, taking out business and turning to residence.
Are we talking like lots 18, 19? That's Rob John.
Well, let's see.
Lot 10.
There are more people, there are lots that are actually doing the resident living, they're in the commercial industrial zone, that are actually just regular residents.
Yeah.
So I think it needs to be specifically, certain lots need to be designated as residential.
Right.
Residential versus commercial. The commercial industrial has been there because you basically grant them the right to do their commercial business without our problems.
I think if there was a change, and we want to maintain the businesses as they are, it's nice that that's a contiguous set of properties.
Right.
Right, because we really can't piecemeal.
It's that spot zoning, you know, we've expanded that before, which.
Yeah, so, you know, we can't do that. So can you tell me on the numbers here, which ones are actually residents?
Yeah, in the business zone coming back from Keene.
Okay.
18 is a residence.
18, 18, 18.
On the side.
Okay, yeah.
19 is a residence.
Yep, I know.
And of course, you have the lot that's, whose own business, which is All Purpose Storage.
Right, Lot 20.
Then you have Lot 22, which is Arlington Bathing, which is a commercial business. 23 is a residence.
That's a business, actually.
23?
Yeah, that's Rob John.
It just got sold, and now it's just a residential property. It's being used, it's renting out right now.
He owns two lots there.
He just sold it to Jimmy Tempesta.
Like his business?
As a property, as a rental property.
Both of them?
Just the home, no, just the 23, which is the house.
Okay.
Okay. And then 24, which is just over into the commercial industrial zone, is a small tiny house, maybe nothing but 1,000 square feet home. And then 26, El's Electric, just purchased that and is just using it to store stuff at the moment. There's nobody currently living in the house of the lot. The next house, which is 27, is a residential home.
Okay.
28 is a residential home.
Yeah.
Then you have, from there on, I would consider is commercial industrial, which is the DOT, lot 29 and lot 30.
Okay.
On the east side. And I don't want to forget about, Manette Finesi, she has a property, which is Lot 25, which has a small access point on Base Hill Road on the inside. And that's also a lot. This 25 is also a zone, commercial industrial.
How about coming down the west side?
So the west side, coming from the south end, which is at the Route 10 location down Base Hill Road, is Low, which is 22, which is the gas station.
Okay.
23 is Signworks. And then Getty is a residential home, Lot 4. And Lot 5 is also just a residential home. Lot 6 is Janagoki, and she's just a small residential home there. Debbie Sprague is Lot 7, and that's always been a residential home. Then you have Lot 8 behind that, which is Yale Forest, and it's also in the residential, commercial industrial zone, a good portion of it. We want to put that to rural agricultural. Lot 11 is Norris, and he had a small farm, and it's a residential home. Then Lot 12 is also a residential tiny home, and that's still in the commercial industrial zone. Then you go to Lot 13, which does overlay a little bit into the business zone. And that's for Yale Forest, rural agriculture, we're hoping for. Lot 14 is Hill's Construction. And my home is Lot 15, and it's a residential home where I run my business out of. And then Rice, which is Lot 16, that's a duplex, it's a residential home. And then it's Yale Forest from there to the Keene line.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So I just can't justify leaving those residential homes that are in the commercial zone to be commercial, besides maybe the blocks of 4, maybe 4, 5 up at the south end of Base Hill Road adjacent to Route 10. And all these property owners are for it to be changed to residence.
All the ones that signed the petition?
Yeah, that I got to hold out today. Sharon, or through the week, you had a question that came up about, is there a different tax rate? Yes. That one of the residents was asking about. Is it different tax rate depending on what zone you're in?
Nope, it's strictly the value of your property.
Right, in general, a street, like, commercial property, or rural, or park, that's why you get shelved.
So the other question I have is, on this map, the blue overlay, what does that signify? Is that?
That just means it's wetlands.
Yeah.
Lot 21, Lot 21 is All Purpose Storage owns that lot, and they would propose it to be rezoned to wetlands.
Have you gotten the EPA involved in any of?
We do, yeah.
It has not been directly involved. The DES has been aware of those two lots adjacent to my lot. And how close it is to an important waterway and wetland area. And that's all at the moment. And the nature conservancy of New Hampshire is interested in helping us to preserve that area at the moment, and they're trying to find funding in those areas. And considering the floodplain that's been there forever, and the new run brook that comes through that leads up into the Keene end with the swamp ash, I believe, is a high priority freshwater brook that I've been told from the nature conservancy of New Hampshire.
Well, a lot of town in the zoning, in our town, actually, every town probably, is just as you see it here.
Right.
Within the zones, there's a lot of residential activity and a lot of residential units in that. It's just the way zoning is. It's zoned for a specific, like, that commercial industrial zone because of Route 10 being there. That's why it's like that. And it's not to say that anything will ever go in there. Who knows? Depends.
Right.
A lot of lots there, a lot of people that have to sell their lots to some larger, you know, industry if it was going to go in there ever. But as the zoning goes, it doesn't make sense to, you know, ride around all these little areas here for zoning, just one line. That's why it's drawn like that. Doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be developed that way. As far as the residential part of it goes, you still could change lots, was it 18, 19, 18 and 19 to residential, because they are now. And 16 and 15, because they are now. Because that, then that starts at what? Hill's Construction and that. Ones that are business and zoned for business, I think, should remain business and zoned for business because, well, they're expecting it, one thing, and they're.
Well, yeah, those what I said, said, will be grandfathered in.
Yeah, but it's different grandfathered in than having it actually zoned for business. Grandfathered in, you know, you can use that business as long as you're using it. If you're not using it for one year, then you lose it, and it goes back to nothing, or residential probably is what it would be. And you can't change a business in there without a bunch of red tape going to the ZBA or something like that. If you wanted, if, we'll say, this guy wanted to sell his business to somebody else, then it's not going to go, well, his ZBA would get involved. And you have to go through there if you want to change a business in there.
How did we approach the, I can't remember the name of the road, off a flat roof, it ran Fenton. This was like, two years ago, we tried, we put out. I see your road. No, it's not working. No, well, watching NASA. I think, I think that's where it was, but we, we gave, we had a public hearing and invited the residents there to voice an opinion because Fenton wanted to change the zoning back there. No, he wanted to keep it. Oh, keep it, excuse me. Right, it's the end that's commercial property. Yeah, and we had, most of them, there's like a dozen or half dozen residents, residential units there, plus was it some pool company at the very end of it? It wasn't an engineering company, I don't know if they had changed. Or something, but anyways, you know, didn't we present that?
We proposed that it be, you know, that those properties, I think, be put into business. We proposed that it be, you know, that those properties, I think, be put into business district. I think that's what the proposal was because it made sense that they should go in there and the property owners were in favor of too. So that went on as a warrant.
So, okay, that went into the warrant article, so.
So this would be the same thing, going to warrant article, regardless of what the planning board says, they can petition to go in anyways.
Just want to be sure that, you know, we're following same sequence.
Yeah, and that's how it would be.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we support the changes because it is mostly residential homes.
It is up to that point, but it isn't afterwards, you know, up to that point of those two lots there, I think where your lot is. And in that lot twenty, yeah, it's residential. And yeah, it makes sense to turn it to residential because it has not been turned to anything else but residential. The other properties have, they're already businesses down there. It's not fair to them, I don't think.
In the commercial zone?
In the commercial, well, commercial zone on the right hand side and in business zone on both sides of the road there, before you get to the commercial zone. What business side, you got the storage units and you've got the Hills Construction, correct? And you've got the paving company in there somewhere.
Then just be a block of business zone right there, a block of commercial industrial.
It would be if it were rezoned that way, yeah. It would be a block, well, within the residential zone, it would be a block of grandfather, father businesses in there.
Right.
Yeah.
And so you're saying that that can't happen?
It can happen if the town votes it to happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the other people above that line that are solely in the commercial industrial zone, they're all just homeowners? And that can't be changed to just residence?
Any of it can be, if the town votes it to change, it doesn't matter what the planning board says. If the town votes a change, it's going to be changed.
Okay.
Because that's who has the authority.
Right. But you, and let me just, I'm trying to understand what you said about if it's, if there's a business that's there.
Yeah.
Then they can do what they need to do. You said that they'd have problems.
I said they can continue with the same business that they have if it's rezoned, you know, if it's rezoned to residential. They can continue with that business as long as they're operating the business. If they shut down for one year, then it goes back to residential use.
So I wasn't proposing any, any business that's there now, stay and do what they're doing. I wasn't, I wasn't thinking that they change at all.
No, no, they wouldn't, they'd just be restricted.
What's around them?
They'd be restricted to any expansion or change in their business there because of the zone, if it were changed to residential.
Oh, okay.
And the uses would be restricted as well.
Right, so yeah, I wasn't expecting them to be changed to residential from what business zone or commercial zone that they're doing now.
Yeah, you mean the use, because you are suggesting it changed to a different zone. You're suggesting it be residential zone, which has specific uses, which don't include what they're doing on that property. But they can, because you're saying they'll be grandfathered in, which they would be grandfathered in.
Okay.
But if they wanted to change that business or expand it or do any changes on there, they'd have to go to the zoning board of adjustment first to get a variance, do it.
To change whatever business they're running there.
Or expand the business or change anything on it. Put up another building or tear a building down or do any modifications that has anything to do with the planning board, they would be to the ZBA first for a variance and then come here.
Then that's just a, isn't that just a normal stage?
It is not, it is not, if it's an allowable use, you want to expand your business, you just come to the planning board.
All right.
You don't have to get a variance, which is difficult to get.
Right.
So that's again, my reasoning on not being for your proposal.
I think, yeah, okay, because, yeah, because I mean, the residents are definitely not content to be in a commercial industrial zone, but they're just residents.
Yeah.
So that's.
The other side of it.
For change.
Go ahead.
Would we have to hold a public meeting, a public meeting?
Public hearing, yeah.
On their proposal?
Definitely.
You have to give us the formal dissertation as to what you want to do.
Yeah, we'd still hold a public hearing, you know, if you got the twenty five signatures to go on the warrant article, still come here. Planning board holds a public hearing, anybody, the public can comment on it, you know, neighbors and all that type of stuff there. And then the planning board can't really change it at all on you, they might be able to change a word here or there, something that did not change the intent of it. And then it would go directly onto the warrant, how you have it, just has to go through the planning board first.
And at that point, the planning board, at that public hearing, the planning board would be voting in support or in opposition.
That is true, yeah.
So you could still conceivably have that little tagline on the warrant article that says the planning board endorses or supports this.
Yeah, or is against it.
Or is against it.
Either way.
Yeah. But can I say something about, I'm just thinking about how we get to have zoning in Swansea or, you know, how zoning happened. So originally, I think the way zoning was set up was sort of an arbitrary, you know, band of color on either side of, say, you know, Route ten was designated, right? And I suspect that's what happened here. And now we're looking to fine tune it in a way that reminds me of what we did in the, around the mill, you know, in the village, village.
Yeah.
Business.
Two and a half, yeah.
Where we actually looked at, you know, how, what the current parcel sizes are, how they're being used, how they're likely to be used. And really sort of fine tuned, that instead of just having this, you know, linear slot, we kind of said, okay, this is really how it's likely going to happen. Which is, you know, a planning function, just cool. And I'm just, I'm looking at the locations, I've circled all the lots that are residents here. And I think this line where we shift from business district, from orange to yellow, business to commercial industrial district, it looks fairly arbitrary, you know, currently. Based on the uses. And in fact, I think it might make a great deal of sense to refine where that boundary is. Even if we weren't to change to residence, but I think, I think it's appropriate to consider extending. If we do change parts of the business district to residence, I think it's really appropriate to consider extending that further down into the commercial industrial district.
Extending the business part of it or residential? Because the business part, you mean?
No, I mean, if, I'm presuming that we would consider converting some of the business district into residence district, as is being proposed. But I think that this, the line between the two districts, the current line, looks kind of arbitrary.
Can I tell you how that happened?
How?
They, in the middle of Route ten, right? Route ten, they did fifteen hundred foot either way, all the corridors. So that's just kind of how it happened.
Yeah, so it's not like it's based on, you know, the road or the topography or anything like that. It's just, you know, here's, here's a rough sketch.
Either way.
Yeah.
All the way down, yeah.
So I think this, I think, you know, when citizens come and ask us to fine tune, I think it makes a lot of sense for us to listen up, especially if it's, you know, the entire neighborhood is signing.
Like we're on a highway.
Right.
And we're off of that highway, which so many feet from the main road where we think most of the commercial industrial businesses would be. You know, it's not going to be improved on, I don't think, this road, being a tight road, you know.
Yeah, it would take a lot.
Many people are sure they're serious. From traffic.
Anyway, I, you know, that's just a lot of words, but I, I hope that you will bring, you know, I'd like for us to have a public hearing. And I hope that all those neighbors would come to, you know, speak, have their peace.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, let's give them some direction. Because if the planning board isn't going to go for it, they should go ahead with their petition and start getting their signatures. So I'm not in favor of it, we can have a consensus or a motion, we don't really need a motion. A consensus is fine because we aren't really deciding anything on it. But we're giving consensus so the residents know which direction to go. They aren't waiting for us forever. So I'm just going to go around their own, I'm not, I'm not in favor of it, Richard.
When you say it, can you tell me what you're not?
I'm not in favor of turning any of those business or commercial properties back into residential.
Making any change, any, you're not.
I'm in favor of being residential down to where it starts to be.
So you're saying fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen?
It would be those, yeah, it would be eighteen nineteen, correct, yeah, and sixteen and fifteen, correct, yeah.
Okay.
Only those.
So with the thought, when you drop down below fourteen, which is a business. Then you get a whole series of residenials until you get to twenty three, so four is the end.
You do.
So that, I agree with what you said with the four, right? It kind of raises the question, though, what was the business in fourteen?
The business in fourteen was Hills excavating business way back in the day. So now it's mostly just a salvage yard of just multiple old equipment sitting there. And clearly is now renting out the garage portion of it to an excavator currently that's using it now. It is minimal.
Right.
One of that used to be.
If that was residential and that was the existing business, if he was to re-rent that, he would have become.
Or a different use, yeah, he would, yeah.
Even if it was the same use but a different business in there?
It's not, where you don't have the multi-tenant thing anymore.
Right.
So.
I'm just saying, he's renting, say, to an escalator.
It'd really depend who he was renting it to, he'd have to come for land use board at least for them to decide that.
And then we come down, we clearly have lot twenty, which is in conflict, lot twenty two. Those are businesses. And then we have all residents until you get to DOT, with the exception maybe of twenty six, what was lot twenty six?
Twenty six is.
It's a resident that was.
Is a resident.
Okay.
It was used for residence for quite some time. And now L's Electric is bought. Nobody's heard of him living in the house on top, he's just using it for storage, it was a hot item. It survives.
Yeah, I'm not sure how, I don't have to lean towards not residential at this point there, though.
But, but what you're saying, I think when you enumerate them, you're saying that those four businesses are the outliers, you know, compared to all the different residences that are there.
All right, I just wanted to get more information before Scott got around to me.
Well, we don't have, if you want to think about it, we don't have to decide it at this meeting. I just want to give them somewhere to go.
Exactly, so that's why I want to kind of play it out now as much as I can. So we've seen this overlay of wetlands, and I know I've walked the property, lot twenty, where the proposed business was going in there. And that lot borders the wetlands.
It's, you know, turning the problem. And it does want, it's a flat plain. It does stay pretty wet.
Sure, I should know this question, but I look at the maps we recently got, would that be considered a significant wetland? Based on?
I haven't seen the evaluation, but I would say yes, it's a large wetland.
See, I was thinking that too. So, I mean, look, conservation committee has public hearings. One of the things that are coming up is we have a wetland buffer, right? So I know that lot twenty is right on the wetlands and it is important to have a buffer for wetlands, especially a significant wetlands. So I'm just throwing that out there, just so everybody at least has the information that I have. Because I can see, well, I know, never mind, we can't change it because of the lawsuit. We can't change that portion of lot twenty because of the lawsuit, okay? But.
Well, I'm over it.
And residential uses in this commercial industrial doesn't mean that they're going to be commercial industrial. You know, they can remain residences as long as they need to. Like portions of that is owned in Yale Forest, that's never going to be developed, that I know of anyways, for any industrial commercial. It's still zoned that way, but it's never going to be industrial.
I'm sure they'll send a rep if they have a problem with it.
Well, we've, Tom, a couple of times tried to buy Yale Forest and it's just a, it's a no. It's a write-off, yeah.
But we've had them in, to the planning board, they've come up to the planning board meetings a few times, discussing it, what they're doing with that.
Put it in conservancy, yeah.
And, and well, but even though, you know, I'm just saying that the zoning map is drawn that way, but it doesn't necessarily mean that those properties are going to be that.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, I'm done asking questions.
Richard, what's that you?
I'd like to see this business district. I'd like to see the lot plotted in there, we've got them on.
You can barely see.
I can't see them at all.
I think they are slightly dry, I think you can barely see a couple of lots, there's one there.
You can see the lots by my area. One with Adamism.
Yeah, just pass that up.
You keep in track of all your stuff?
Yeah.
So that's what we have.
Thought I'd done everything.
Oh, yeah, they're sort of there. Just in the paint, but.
And then here's a regular one, so you can see the other side of the, and I can't see the lot either, so.
I'd like to see it blocked out. More specifically as to what you want.
Okay.
And isolating the existing businesses that are there on both sides.
Yeah.
Just so I can get a better handle on it, but I really don't, you know, we've, we've changed or given the opportunity to change commercial industrial into residential. We do it flatly. If the population wants to do it or propose it, I don't see why we, why we should be giving them any difficulty.
Okay, Michael?
With you, Scott, I'm concerned about the businesses that are there, they're property.
Okay, so that's a no. Steve?
It may come close to spot zoning.
Yes, it is spot zoning, yeah.
Could we?
But we can.
Take the residential properties that are residential use properties and rezonate residential and leave the business properties as.
You can, you know. Yeah, well, no, you want to turn all the business and everything into residential to this. No, no, you're, we're talking about two different things. You're saying that can still use their business, but it's zoned residential, correct?
No.
Oh, you're.
The business is that is there.
Or is it going to be zoned business?
They can stay business, they can stay commercial industrial, Arlington can stay what it's doing, All purpose storage can stay what it's doing, Hills can stay what it's doing, which is business. And then the lots up near the highway, which is obviously the Sign Works and the DOT, obviously, and the gas station stays commercial industrial.
So that'd still be zoned, huh?
Exactly.
Correct.
Commercial industrial. Then all these little residents, which is basically, you know, three quarters of the people there, they're in just the residential homes. Four, five, six, seven, you know, eleven, twelve, be zoned residential.
I, I have a question, I, I'm sorry, we already talked about this on Tuesday when we met.
Right.
If we're only going to be rezoning the lots that currently have residences on them. Are, is this rezoning only if they sell their lots? Then you guys don't want any more businesses going on to those lots? Because otherwise, what's the point of rezoning?
Right, we don't want any more businesses.
If they sell their, if they sell their house, then somebody could come in and build something. And that, that's what we, that's what you guys don't want, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We don't want any more volume of like all purpose storage or another Arlington baby moving in. Or another shopping mall showing up, send a commercial zone, which doesn't even make sense here at all.
Okay.
So that's the point.
So that, what you're saying now kind of would be rezoning even the businesses, but allowing the businesses. See, there's a difference between doing that or leaving it zoned business.
Yeah.
If you leave it zoned business.
Right.
Probably won't, you know, get resistance, probably on the board, okay? Because you're not taking somebody's rights away.
Right.
But if you have residents that want to be, you know, residential.
Yeah.
Then I would think the board would be okay with it.
Right, because that's.
So the properties in question are really fourteen, twenty two, and twenty, and twenty. Those three properties are really the ones in question.
Right, they stay with the way they are right now.
Meaning they stay zoned business.
Correct. And everything around them, residential. And the same goes for the commercial industrial zone.
Okay.
Okay, so that.
Difficult to communicate.
So. You getting all this stuff up?
I, I think, I, I think land use and zoning are being used interchangeably here for some people. And.
Yeah.
Tell us more.
I think, yeah.
I don't follow you on that one.
Like, so like, you could live in a residence and its, its land use is residential, but it could be zoned as like in the business district. They're two different things. Yeah. I, I want to say, just I thought here, so like, if, if the land's already being used for a residence, I just, I guess I just don't see. It causes nobody any harm to rezonate residence, not saying that's not, if you guys vote for it, that's great. But I just, I just don't see the reason to, if it's already being used that way.
As a residence?
Yeah.
To rezonate for residence?
Right, because the way it's already, it already is a residence.
I, I see a reason, which is protection, right?
They sell their property, yeah.
Yeah, because if it's, if it's a neighborhood, which is what I'm hearing, then just as we did in North Swansea, we wanted to protect the neighborhood attributes of it by being very mindful of what businesses. by being very mindful of what businesses should be in the middle of that. And, and what I'm hearing from all the surveyed members of this neighborhood is that they would like it to be purely residence.
Do, are they under the impression though, that all purpose is in that?
No, no. Do you know it's a business zone right there?
But all three of those lots for all purpose, not just the one that their business is on, but.
Correct.
Lot 20.
Yeah.
The newly subdivided lot 21. I just, I want to make sure that they sign this knowing.
Yeah.
That all of the, all purpose storage.
Is own business for right now. Correct. It stays that way.
Okay.
Until we can make a difference eventually.
Okay.
Which is something like that. I didn't even know.
Okay. If they sign that knowing that, then that, then that's.
Right. Yeah, they just want to protect their property and their neighborhood and the volume of traffic coming down this road constantly.
If somebody sells their property, then they don't want it to get bought up by a business.
Correct. Yeah, both same. But the people that are in the commercial industrial zone, which want to keep it a residential zone versus being commercial industrial. They want to protect their properties from further commercializing.
Okay.
Exactly.
Different from what I thought you were talking about.
No, I thought you had it wrong. I don't want to change what's there and what they're doing for business right now.
Yep.
But everything, this doesn't make sense to me that they went up this far with a commercial industrial zone on this road and then the rest of it was business. Because, you know, half, over half of those lots in the business zone are residents or homes and they've never been businesses. Like Arlington paving, like hills and all purpose.
How about then you clarify it for us for another meeting? Because you still have time.
Sure.
If the planning board says no, and you still have time for the petition. If you take one of your blank pages there and use a green pen or whatever color you want to use just to mark all the properties that are going to, that you propose to be residential and all the properties you propose to be commercial and industrial. And with those two different colors. And then just stop acting here.
I'm following what's there now and I think they should be able to do what they want with your businesses there now.
If you do that for us, and shall we keep this? We want this back?
Okay.
We'll keep this and this.
And that also.
So if you would do that for us, that would clarify.
Okay.
What we're looking at.
Can you send that out to the rest of us?
I can. And do we want, do we need two more meetings? So the next meeting, do we want a clarification and then a public hearing? Or the next meeting, do we want a public?
Clarification. We need clarification.
We need to just give them an idea of.
Exactly.
Of what, you know, we probably won't have a public hearing on it one way or the other, because we have time for zoning public hearings. We'll probably put it into another zoning public hearing later on.
Yeah.
So we have plenty of time for that. We just need them to know which way we're leaning so that they aren't waiting around for us to do something.
Yep.
So just the next meeting, you'll get clarification, which way the board is going to go.
And I think if you want to do a petition this year, the window is November 10th to December 10. And that's in an RSA. I can't remember what RSA is. Six, seven, four, five.
You've got plenty of time to put a petition in if the board doesn't go along with you.
I would dig around in the RSAs a bit on petition or zoning petitions.
But they can help with the land.
Yeah, I can try to find something.
You'll have enough time. You'll be okay. Just.
Would it be helpful if, and the signatures might be there, but if it was clear that the property owners in these lots that are residential indicate that they are in favor of this?
They can if they want, but we have a public hearing and each one will get a certified letter saying that zone is going to change there and they can come to the meeting and, and you can get that if you want. That's fine with us, but I'm just saying that you don't have to do that.
I just figured it was an easier step to have us do it since we're there and they understand what to do.
Just prepare us, prepare us your new map, your drawing of different colors for what the zones you propose there, and then we'll look at it next meeting.
Are you saying signatures, Mark? Are you saying signatures for our deliberations or for a bigger petition?
Just literally like an affidavit.
Just so that we know.
They're okay.
They're okay.
They're in favor of this change.
That's what the public hearing is all about, though. That's what public hearings are all about. We don't need anything special for it.
Well, we've already, I'm just wondering if that's some information that Mark's asking to have you put on the map or if.
No, no, no. Public hearings are for the public to comment and that's the way, no special things at all for any.
And I did have like two, two questions, two questions. Two law always were concerned about wanting to know if the property value changed or property assessment changed.
And yeah, they can ask a lot of the public hearing.
No problem.
Yep.
Didn't get it.
What the market will bear in commercial property is, on the market is, because I was a realtor, a commercial realtor. And when you say commercial versus, versus residential, the commercial one is going to sell by high end.
Correct.
It's going to be assessed by the town like it normally would be.
Okay. So there are two different kinds of brackets involved.
Now, look at your tax bill when it says market assessment.
Yeah.
That that's the true market assessment. That's what the town sees. But almost every property out there will sell for more than what the town says.
Yeah, a lot of them see that, yeah.
It's what the market will bear.
So I was the assessing coordinator for the town. So, so what happens is the, the dirt is assessed at a uniform value throughout the town.
Okay.
And then structure is assessed at a separate rate based on, you know, how big it is and the quality of construction, stuff like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then if somebody comes to a, wants to buy it, it's whatever they want to pay for.
Right. Okay.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Yep. We'll see you next meeting. All right. Brings us to discussions and other business. We have a definition discussion of office. That's first on the line, so I guess we'll do that one. Now, we have in our zoning that office definition there.
Yeah, we should do.
Corporate office, I think it is.
Yeah, we just, we, if, if you guys were satisfied.
It's not a bad definition.
It's not really. I kind of like it.
It's pretty good.
It's already in there.
It's already in there. So, so what if, you know, we're talking about corporate offices. We aren't talking about like a little dentist office or something like that. We're talking about a building that has offices in it, I think is what the intent of that use is. And we have it in different places in zoning. And as Adam pointed out, it's, it's sort of changed around a little bit as the wording. So we can change that to one specific, whether it's corporate businesses or corporate offices or something like that, professional offices and use that same definition that we have in our zoning. I'll read that if.
Oh, yeah. If you guys want to look at the last page in the packet, that's what this is on.
Okay.
You guys can see the definition that's currently listed as corporate office.
Yep.
The proposal in the packet is to just change it to offices. That's just to get us started. It's fine if that's what you guys want, but that's just, I want to throw something out there. If it doesn't stick, that's, that's fine.
Plural offices?
Offices. I think, I think so.
Okay.
I, I had a reasoning and I lost it. But I think, I think office is office. Kind of however you guys want to define it, it's fine.
As, yeah, it's under corporate office, right?
Yep.
In our zoning there.
Yes.
And, and then it gives a description. So we could leave it corporate office and only have to change where it is in the zoning itself. We have it in corporate office in the zoning, what, in one of the.
Industrial.
Industrial, that's where it is. So we could change it.
I'm just not happy with.
What is corporate mean? What is that?
Exactly.
Corporate means to me a company like Ozone and Savannah comes in, they got a big office going.
Yeah.
And that may not be what we're looking at. It would be professional, a professional office.
Yeah. Which is why offices is nice and.
Yeah, just any other kind of office.
Yeah.
But that makes you think that, well, you're talking about maybe individual office here and there. I mean, it's kind of vague there.
Yeah.
Whereas it, I think we're talking about a building that has offices in it.
Yeah.
So it's implied scale.
Well, okay, so the letter A, okay, do you mean that to be, building or buildings used permanent for connecting the affairs of a business profession?
That's just how it reads currently. I didn't change it.
So, so it's the difference between a building that has a single, you know, whatever this business is you're talking about, or, you know, a bunch of.
That, that definition covers anything from a house to a big complex, honestly. I mean, it's building or buildings.
It's a good definition.
So, I mean, it, it does scale. That definition scales. What it would call, it might not, so.
Richard?
I just have one grammatical thing. I see how it flies. But after industry or government, my thought is period, strike or like activity. And then.
Love it.
It may include ancillary.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, I, I think there are definitely, there are ways we can change that definition to flow better. How it's worded right now in the code, I, I don't love it. But it's there. And that's, that's the benefit is that it's there. But I guess if you, if we wanted to change that definition around, it would still probably only be the one more article.
But I, I'm not sure about that. Because if, if we're asking this one, this new office definition to take the place of business and professional offices in the commercial industrial, take the place of professional business office in village business one, and take the place of professional business or corporate office, village business two, isn't that three zonal changes?
So we're, we are already changing those zones to incorporate our new definitions for the other two.
Okay.
And so those are already captured in those amendments. So it's, yeah. And you guys can say that next week.
Good job.
Actual amendments.
Good job. Good job.
Do the whole changes mirror other definitions for that word in the code?
It mirrors a certain city close to us that I won't name. I won't name it. It does name, it, it does mirrors some similar sized municipalities, but there are some big, larger, larger cities that have just straight office and their definition like ours scales, so.
Whatever the definition, it should be the same definition used throughout our code or through somebody else's code.
Yeah, this is.
It will be, because it's in our, it's in our zoning right there. That exactly just copied from the zoning exactly right there.
Yep.
And whether or not we take out, like Richard suggested, we, we leave out or like activity, which is fine because we're talking about businesses, offices. And, and we could easily leave that out of there and to make it flow a little bit better.
I agree with you there.
Yeah, so we all in agreement with that? We just cross out or like activity?
I'm still, I, I don't want to be dangerous.
Go ahead.
On what you were saying, is it your picture that this definition of an office as a use means just one company in that? Or could it be, you know, multiple floors, different business on each floor?
That's what I'm picking because of where it was used in the zoning, that it was larger buildings.
Okay.
And we do need to decide on whether it's going to be just offices or professional business offices or professional or business and professional offices.
We can, we can choose professional offices or business. We can choose one of these already.
Yeah, we can choose. Right. And then we'll have to change in that part, right? How about professional business offices? We have that in, in village business one, I guess.
And that encompasses, that would encompass even a corporate office.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So if we, if we then consolidated or use that definition for just that one professional business offices and then changed it in the other zoning, because it says business and professional offices and commercial industrial and professional business or corporate offices.
Yeah.
So we can just use that one professional business offices then, and use that same definition maybe with that.
You'll get no complaints from me.
A little bit crossed out. So.
Question. What constitutes?
A professional business? Up to interpretation.
I guess it would be. Yeah, I guess it would be.
It is up to interpretation, yeah.
If it's considered about a professional, no matter what, be a professional.
Legally professional business.
I think we should just say business office. Is that, except.
Thinking of this.
Strike professional business office.
How the zoning, and I know I, we always take it with a grain of salt. The zoning dictionary likes to classify professional businesses as like lawyers, tax consultants, stuff like that. So if we wanted to leave professional out, that's fine too. But I mean, I think it's fine. It's, it's, it's vague enough where we could fit almost anything in there.
I think we should order with Gary Kenny.
I would consider you professional.
Well, we could use the one below it, you know, and that one says professional, business common or corporate.
I hate that one. I hate that one.
That adds a lot more to it.
We could.
Professional business offices, I think, kind of covers it.
It does. It does. We, I want one. I don't care how we get there. I want one. I don't think we need four. I, I would accept two, but I, I really think we only need one. And wherever you guys decide, I, I'm going to be okay with it.
What does the board think by consensus? Professional business offices, Richard?
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Michael?
Sounds good.
Steve?
Professional goes out.
Okay, so you're a no. Okay, Victoria?
I'm good with that.
Mark?
I think we're going to.
I think we're going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
By consensus. We'll just use that. If we run into trouble, then you can blame us. I told you so.
I don't blame them. It's a point finish.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. You guys will see you probably trip me by leaving.
Okay, so that's it. By consensus, professional business offices were perfect. And we'll have to change it in business, business, I mean, business village two.
Yep.
Deser Park and Hurricanum, right?
Yep, exactly.
Professional business offices.
So just, just one question. So looking at a village business district, for example, that's part of the mine area, right, that we're looking to control. Here we allow professional business offices. I guess a business. Right here in town.
It may.
Probably looking for similar offices, maybe some additional parts. Get into the industrial park or commercial industrial area. It could be, you know, a huge building.
Right.
I can't make any candidates.
So was that definition kind of hold true in all those scenarios?
It does because of lot sizes. I mean, you know, you.
And that's a hope, because there's like, there's limitations, right? 35 or 40.
That, and there's setbacks and parking, all that type of stuff. So that limits them in those different zones.
Okay.
Yeah, I like to think village business one and two would be able to contain a different server.
Yeah, small, a couple offices or something like that, maybe one office.
And I guess, you know, and I guess if we find out in the future that it doesn't, then we'll look at it again, right? I mean, I don't think it will have that problem.
We probably won't.
Yeah.
And I don't want to go over that. Have that with.
Are you folks back for us? Okay.
Later on, if there's a, an update, you are, what kind of, unless you are.
Okay.
No, I haven't, but well, I kind of, you heard what I said, but you heard what I said earlier.
Let's see.
Already done, service shop.
That brings us, yeah, service shop. Retail establishment, that's the next one on the line, number B. I mean, letter B, definition discussion, retail establishment. And we have one of those in here too, correct, Adam?
Yes, it's in the same MO on the other side. Just condensing retail business establishment and retail sales, comma, services. Yeah. And so I, I like this because you have service establishment and you have retail establishment. I think they work really well together. There's kind of opposite sides for the same point. And that would be classified as a business or commercial enterprise that provides immediately accessible goods to the consumer. That is a starting definition. I expect this to be looked at.
So immediately, you mean, you found the shelf, you can walk out with it.
That was my thought.
Opposed to, what would, what would not be immediate?
That's why we're, I, I don't know.
I, I have some wording for that somewhere.
Yes. I, I'm Frankensteining a couple of definitions from the dictionary slash municipalities. Nothing really favors what we want to accomplish.
Retail establishment would, my opinion would be sales in small quantities and are direct to the consumer as distinguished from sales at wholesale in large quantity meant for resale.
Yeah.
Cause retail is for retail, wholesale is for wholesale, and that distinguishes the two. I'll read it over again. Sales, go ahead.
Question. Are we allowed to deliberate this while that application is still on the table?
What application is that?
The Bezos Road application.
And we're deliberating what? You mean, you're talking about the zoning change?
Oh, because they have.
No, no, the retail sales and.
They have to sell, comma, services.
This has nothing to do with them. This has to do with zoning.
I, I think we can because they, if they applied under that, that's what they fall under. They wouldn't fall under this new definition because that.
Right. Without service or something like that. Service, that's what the whole.
I think so. We'll, we'll check with the.
Good point to bring up.
Yeah, we'll check with the board.
Yeah. So again, retail establishment, sales in small quantities and are direct to the consumer as distinguished from sales at wholesale in large quantity meant for resale.
See it.
Oh, go ahead.
We're going to pass. Do you really have to do the small versus large quantity?
We don't have to. We can leave the wholesale thing out of it.
Because, you know, retail is one thing, wholesale is another.
Yeah.
This comes in little boxes. This is many things in big boxes.
One is meant for resale and the other one is meant to direct to the consumer. And we're trying to distinguish that. Yeah, we might not need that in there at all.
I can go to a wholesale operator and buy half a truckload of a particular product.
Widgets.
Widget, grapefruit.
Distributor, right?
Whatever. I can take and turn around and sell by the case what I just bought wholesale. Is that reset, retail or?
If you're selling directly, if you're selling directly to the consumer, it's retail.
The wholesale is selling directly to me.
Yeah.
I am one of many. Maybe buying from him.
But what you're doing with the product is you're selling it to Victoria or you're selling it to another company who's going to resell it again.
Okay.
But he's saying she's not. She's saying she's going to sell this.
Yeah, wholesaler selling to her, to Victoria, to Mark, to everyone.
If you're selling to another wholesaler, then you're.
It's not a wholesaler. They're a retail.
Okay.
Establishment.
Then you're the wholesaler and they're the retailer, correct?
Okay.
They're going to sell to the, the final customer. You're going to sell to her who has the store.
Ideally. There's always going to be some greater.
So how about, how about web? Okay. That's a retail establishment, is it not? And it has, it has a, you know, walk-in where I can immediately access, get some immediately accessible goods. Or it can sell retail to the plumber who's going to, you know, effectively they're wholesaling it because they're, I hope they're buying it at slightly lower cost and then.
I think their primary is wholesale and I think their accessory would be retail because everyone's always a lot like an accessory use, right? Because if you go into a hairdresser, their primary is going to be a service establishment, but they might have an accessory use of a retail establishment. But.
That's what we just defined.
They're always allowed to have that.
So you would not say that web is a retail?
I think there would be a wholesale.
It would be wholesale too because.
I think there would be wholesale.
When you have a plumber come to your house and the plumber goes down.
There are two separate businesses in there though, too.
Yeah. So anyway, let's, let's just say that the, there is a side to web where you can go in and you can buy stuff.
If it's a separate storefront, then they are definitely a wholesale seller.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it is.
I think the suggestion.
But that's correct.
Go ahead.
Blacks Law Dictionary.
Yep.
Great big book.
Yep.
Has wonderful definitions.
No, it doesn't. It's a law.
They are only confused. Well, for an attorney, it's a wonderful book. To layman is confused.
I'm a planner, Steve.
When we are trying to find out, figure out definition of words. I think some type of dictionary. Doesn't have to be blacks, can be anybody's. You got the manufacturing code. You can go back to what I have, all those different things in it if you want to go back.
So let's get back to the position of sales. Sales and would it be retail, would it be sales in small quantities and or direct to the consumer?
I like direct to the consumer. I'm not sure about the quantities.
Small quantities, okay. Sales.
Could the Costco be a retail place and that's large quantity, right?
Okay.
Larger.
Yeah, larger quantities.
So sales direct to the consumer.
That's, that's small quantities. That's, that's not large quantities. Large quantities you find by the pallets.
Larger trailer pallets.
Just clarify real quick. We already have these uses in our code. So, I mean, we're just trying to define something that's, that we already have in Swansea. We're just condensing the two already existing uses into one. But by doing that, we do have to unfortunately define it, I think. So. We could leave it undefined if you guys want to leave it undefined.
I want to separate sales and services. I really.
I really do. I really do.
I think maybe we should keep the small quantities in there because then if you're selling in large quantities, you could be a wholesaler.
Okay.
So it does, because like Adam brought up.
Is like that big?
Quantities. Yeah. He brought up the fact of a hairdresser, right? Smelling and selling small quantities of hair product as opposed to large.
Pallets.
Like he was talking about pallets. So if they're selling pallets of it and it was just under selling to the consumer, they'd say, well, I'm just selling to consumer. I bought five pallets of whatever, rather than establishing a retail establishment is something smaller on a smaller scale than selling pallets of things.
Let's keep it. Let's keep it.
I want to buy a case of ABC. Is that a retail or wholesale? Does it buy the case?
Oh, I believe it.
Twenty-four inch.
Yeah, right. We don't need to go down that far. If, if you're the consumer and you're going to use that case of whatever the heck it is, then it was a retail sales because you're the consumer, you aren't reselling it to someone or something or whatever. So.
I think it means if you're distributing in large quantities, odds are you're a wholesaler because you're distributing. So you're going to go for wholesale regardless because you have the volume.
A wholesaler does not sell to the general public. So does not send, sell to the end user. No, a wholesaler does, for all this purpose, because we're going to go into warehousing and we have warehousing and that type of stuff here. So yeah, someone once in a while might come in and say, you know, sell me a bit of that.
All the time.
You make, but again, they, they sell not, not to, not, you're the end user, right? What'd you buy off it? You know, whatever you bought, you're the end user. Like, my, my plumber, he said that was wholesale, but you're talking about two different things. Wholesale, talking about price wise, we aren't, you know, but it isn't for, for our zoning, it isn't because you're talking about wholesale. But web sold to that plumber, he was the end user. He used it and put it in that house. So that was a, that was not a wholesale. That was a retail, maybe for wholesale prices, for retail sales.
A wholesale establishment looks way different than a retail establishment. It's just so much bigger. I don't think we're going to run into any issues.
All right. I lost track of where we are.
So we're, we're asking, we're designing whether retail establishment is going to say sales in small quantities and or, or how much? Yeah. Sales in small quantities direct to the consumer.
And are we taking out the business or commercial enterprise that provides immediately accessible goods? Are we replacing that?
Oh, yes.
I think we're replacing.
Yeah, we are. That was meant to be replaced. I like that you guys are starting.
Doing something to start with. That is good. We need that.
For small quantities being small amounts of the same item, even though they might be buying many items?
We probably don't need to go that far in defining it. We're.
We're just trying to make sure we don't get trapped. That's why I'm just, you know.
Well, if, if there's, you know, when they come into the planning board, they say, well, we're selling small quantities, but it's, we consider a shipload or a boxcar load, small quantity. The planning board say, well, that's not a small quantity, you know, this, this is what the definition says. And that's when you maybe get into that. You know, there's not any more I can say whether they're a wholesale or.
Sure, you know, small quantities. I'm not, I'm not sure if there's.
I think you have to because if you don't have small quantities in there, you could have the guy with the box truck in, you know, in his store selling huge quantities as wholesale, but selling well, saying, well, you know, you don't say anything about quantities and we're just selling to the direct consumer and this is it.
So Market Basket is a retail establishment. It's selling huge volumes of stuff. So it's not small quantities.
Well, but you buy it in small quantities. You go in the store and buy it.
Small quantities of individual items.
Yeah. And, and it's selling to the end user.
You might buy a hundred items, but they're, you know.
But they're all different items.
They're different items.
So you're buying small quantities.
Yeah.
But like the co-op has occasional case lot purchasing by the consumer.
Yep.
It's more, it's more than what would be interpreted.
But they're in key.
But say, well, Gomarlos has their packs of, you know, meats and stuff. I'm just saying.
It'll give the planning board more, or the planning department or code enforcement, whoever, more control if we leave that in there because then you wouldn't have a wholesaler coming in, in a place where we don't think a wholesaler should be.
Can, can you read it or can I send over? I'll read it.
I'll send. I crossed it up and I, we put it back in again.
So which one am I reading?
That penciled one in the bottom there.
Retail establishment.
Yes.
Sales in small quantities and were direct to the consumer as distinguished from sales.
Well, we probably aren't putting that in there.
I think it's, I think it can't hurt and it might help.
Sales, small quantities and were direct to the consumer.
There's always going to be.
I think just sales in small quantities and direct to.
Yeah, leave the and or out there.
We got a consensus.
All right, we're done.
Think of it as starting.
Is that the consensus of the board there then? Is that the consensus? For now?
Yeah, for now.
We're going to go over this again.
Where'd you go?
We'll have public hearings on it.
Where did you go?
Michael, where did I go? Steve?
I'm coming up on the word small.
Duly noted. You put it in the minutes there.
I like the word small. I'm all about it.
Mark, Mark, leaving it with the small quantities in there?
If there was a better word, I'd go with it.
Well, keep thinking about it because we're going to be looking at this again.
So I will have this drafted in.
I'm with, I'm with Rich.
I'll have this drafted in an amendment next meeting so you guys can look at it and how we vote it. If you guys don't like it then let me know.
And we can change wording then.
You guys have a while to change it. So we're, we're good. We got, I have to a final wording.
Okay, the final wording, yes. After all of that is sales, retail establishment, definition of that. Sales in small quantities direct to the consumer. Right? Okay. So do you want that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. You can do it. Okay, so, oh, brings us to site plan review frame.
You want to do this video?
Yeah. We're postponing that until the, the next meeting.
I think if it was the off of the next agenda.
Okay, but we'll put it on the next agenda anyway.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, so does anyone have anything else for the meeting?
Yeah, I'll just give you a quick, all big, um, from the front of the meeting information. So we haven't forgotten that y'all asked us a year ago to look at the 125 foot web setback. And we hired Moosewood Ethological and they just came in a couple of days ago to our meeting and gave us their summary with some maps and some interesting information of the weapons evaluation they did this season. They're also going to give us their final version of the ordinance audit that they did for us starting last winter. So we have those two things that we want to share with you really soon. And the Concom is having a separate meeting in the next couple of weeks to sort of make a game plan for how we're going to have what we're going to present. And, and so they hope to come see you in November at one of your meetings and then you can tell us which one will be better. To talk about these things and to brainstorm with you guys about how to move forward.
Do you want to be an agenda item or do you want to have a joint meeting?
It's a good question.
It, it doesn't matter, I guess, because we discuss the same things, you know, we'll set time up whether it's a gen item or not and whoever can make it from your board.
Yeah, I, I can't remember the last time we had.
I, I think it would be very productive to be a joint meeting.
Yeah, I think that could be great.
Then we'll have to see. I guess Adam can coordinate.
Tell me well in advance.
Yeah. It's going to be because we have.
All can come to our next conservation commission meetings. I don't think we cut a ton on the agenda probably.
I think joint meetings are held by the planning board. I think when it's, it's underneath that. I think so. We usually have.
I live on your municipality. Like planning and licenses holds our planning board joint meeting. Would this be on a planning board date?
It could be on a planning board day.
Yeah.
These second meetings.
Yeah.
And so what's, what's going on? I don't know what's.
It's going to be more. Yeah.
Or you can do it.
We can start public hearings in November or we can start in December.
We can do it in lieu of our next meeting.
We have, we got time. We could. We have enough time.
Do we have applications first?
We're on time now for public, for town meeting stuff. And so I want to stay on time, but we, I, we started this early enough that we're still.
What she has to present might be.
Exactly, yes.
Town meeting stuff. So maybe the sooner the better.
Yep.
You said that the next planning board meeting in October was going to be in this one.
I actually think we're going to be okay. We have two applications, a subdivision and a value line adjustment. Kind of, they're pretty light. I mean.
I'm not sure we'll be ready by then because we did want to have a, we're trying to schedule another Concom meeting this month so we can get our act together.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Okay. If, if you want.
Go on after that.
Look at the agenda for November. The dates for the planning board meetings changed. There are two back-to-back meetings on the 14th and then whatever the date is after the 21st.
One of those probably weren't good, actually. Probably won't be so swamped in one of those.
Exactly. So.
So in November.
Look at the schedule for November. I can put that to you if you want.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to you.
Yeah, there is time. There is time.
Okay.
Did you say someone in the back was?
Did you?
I was just going to ask if it's a joint planning board meeting, would that be on the same days for either way or?
Yeah, it would be.
Okay. And then otherwise, alternatively, if it's on a different date, do you want films? That's not like a joint board.
Doesn't need to be. I mean, even the planning board meetings, in my opinion, don't need to be filmed, you know? So if you can't make it, it's no problem.
Okay. Well, I'm just going to give you that.
Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll let you know like way in advance, hopefully.
Yeah, pretty much. So, so let's have that, that November then.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll figure out a change in.
Absolutely. Yeah, sure.
So let's see. The subcommittee for the fire station.
I'm sorry. Stefan had something he wanted to. There was the request for the funds.
Do I have crosswalks?
Yeah.
So the selectmen, I don't know if they proved that or whatever, but they want to.
They must do.
They, they did. They want to put crosswalks. These are flashing light crosswalks and not really crosswalks either, right?
No.
I don't think they plan to plant them. But anyways, it's on Sora's Crossing Road where the rail trail crosses a road a couple of different times there. And it'd be set up like a push button where it'd start flashing lights on the road. So drivers can see that some, something's going to happen there.
It's so nice.
So I think they're looking for our recommendation. Is that what it is? Yep.
So there's three of them, right?
Yeah.
Four? Three. Three. Okay.
And then last night they talked about putting one up right here where, where Eaton Road goes through the rail trail. Because the residents on Railroad Street were complaining about cars going too fast, which isn't going to really stop that too much. But anyways, they talked about that too. May or may not be in that. But that was just last night, selectmen's meeting.
That'd be so good.
Today, if the board, go ahead.
Those, we were talking about this earlier. My preference priority is Route 10, crossing from Perry Lane to Cover School versus the rail trail. I would like to see that happen before the rail trail link.
I was a gentleman and I'm a little bit old because not only that, that being a state road, we'd have to give permission from the state and that's going to take you a year at least.
Thirty-two is a state road. And they put it up pretty quickly between the two schools.
Well, it's a lot next year. School at different times. State, the state had that in that plan, you can remember to do that. And you'd have to go back and, and I agree with you, but you should be there. Don't get me wrong. But what I'm talking about is the state has control over that. And I think it'd be an agenda issue and it might take quite some time to get it done.
Well, Route 10 is a different class highway. Is it a class two highway?
It's class three.
Three highway, but it's different than Route 32.
Is it?
But this is, this is for a grant, I think, that they're getting for that.
Well, the one with Route 32 was done on purpose because if you remember when I came from the border, that's what they said if they put in that in the roundabout, they were going to do that.
Oh, that, yeah, I know. I'm still talking.
That was already in the state's plan.
Yeah, yeah.
This is something we're going to have.
That's, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, it's a good point. Good point.
I don't know. We could do it with this.
If it's a block grant, I don't see why you'd have.
It's not a block grant.
You guys don't get permission from the state, even if it didn't stop and say, yeah, we'll have to do it. You got to get permission from the state to do anything with it.
We'd have to get permission from the state before we got the grant because they would never issue us a grant without permission from the state to do that.
Also, there's actually two applications.
What are they?
The second one is sidewalks by Swansea Center, like a continuation of that going towards.
And they're looking for the planning board input, input on both of those? Is that what, or you're talking about two grants or what are we talking about?
It's, so it's not a grant, two separate applications.
Oh, okay.
And we don't, we're not prioritizing either of them. We're just submitting them.
So you're looking for, or selectmen are looking for a recommendation from the planning board for both of those things, no?
No, the town is looking for support for, from the planning board.
And that'd be a recommendation that the planning board supports that. Yeah. Okay. So if the planning board supports that, then we need a motion stating so.
And the sidewalk is just to fill a gap between existing sidewalks now. Is that quite?
No, I think it's just an extension because there's no, I think it's. There's really no sidewalk.
Yeah.
Far down 32.
Yeah.
After the range, it's gone.
Yeah.
Not yet, Mark.
Guess I wasn't following the conversation.
So we have a motion by Michael as a recommendation to the selectmen that the planning board is in favor of those crosswalks. And not really crosswalks, but the, the lights will say on Sora's Crossing Road and the extension of the sidewalk on.
It's a long Route 32.
Long 32.
Your Swansea.
Same side. We have a second for that?
Second, but, but are you sorry, isn't it Matthews, Matthews Road flashing lights with the?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Yeah, Matthews Road. Yeah. I said Sora's Crossing Road, didn't I?
You did, but that's okay.
As a daily driver of that rail trail, please.
Yes.
The visibility on that, on that.
What time it goes through?
It's bad.
Like seven, eight.
Okay, so we have motion and a second motion was by, Michael's second was by Victoria. Okay, so we have motion and a second motion was by Michael, second was by Victoria in favor of that. Is there any further discussion?
I'll just say those lights, each one of those units, I believe it's about $12,000.
Is it?
Just so people realize that.
That's right, huh?
That's great, correct?
Correct.
The mass, oh man. It's for us to see the transportation.
I see why he's not training us tonight. He can't keep a train of thought there, too distracting. Take notes. Okay, all those in favor? Anybody by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, you have a recommendation from us? Is it okay in the minutes or do you need a memo from the office?
I have one drafted.
Okay, then I'll just sign that. Okay, I have one drafted, okay. Anything else other than we have, well, the, the fire station subcommittee? Where we are right now is that we've, we're gonna contract with the architect to draw up a set of smaller plans for that site up there, going with the site on Route 32. And she's authorized, I think there's a cap of $30,000 to come up with a set of plans and from maybe DEW to decide what it might cost us for developing that site. So that's just starting out. Last night, they just approved that, so by November 8th, we should have a set of plans for that, a new fire station, actually, yeah, number two station is what it is.
Right.
And the, the station is configured differently now. It's swung around so that the engines come directly straight onto 32. There is administrative part of it to the left of the building and then there are two stories there with unfinished upstairs for future development of the fire department. And the selectmen also are going to pursue with, I think, the developer right next door to extend the water line up to that lot because the sewer's already there and they, they need the water there for the fire station, so.
You know, fire station, you can go there, some other home.
Could go there. It could, yeah. Yeah, because, yeah, it's all gonna be voted by the voters, but we're just seeing what it's gonna cost. We've told the architect that we want a cap of 3.5 million to see what our design can come up with and so that's what we're doing, that's what we are now.
So your question, will the unfinished upstairs be insulated?
Most likely, yes, it should be, right? It'll be insulated. We talked about that, I think, with the architect and it, it makes sense to insulate it. Don't leave it uninsulated.